Evening, everyone.
Good evening.
And welcome to the November 9, 2020 Board of Trustees Meeting. Will everyone please join me in a salute to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the people of Congress, and to our nation, to God, and to this world with liberty and justice for all. Will the village clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Andino, we know she's going to be late.
Going to be late, yes.
Flag absent. Trustee Howell.
President.
Trustee Lee.
President.
Mayor Luisey.
I am here. We're going to begin tonight's meeting by taking some appointments, and we're going to begin with the sign-in warning board. Nominating Patricia Costa Borremedy to the sign-in warning board to fulfill an unexpired term ending April 1, 2022. Do I have a motion?
I'm moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Howell.
Abstained.
Trustee Lee.
Can you hear me?
No. Trustee Lee.
I can't hear you guys.
You're not gonna, hey, Mr. Mayor, you're not gonna be able to pass this one.
We can't pass, there's only two and one abstained.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Here we go again. Okay, my next appointment is an ad hoc position to the planning board to be filled by Ayesha Scholes, with a term to expire April 1, 2021. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Howell.
Abstained.
The same thing then, Mayor.
Okay, forget, I'm taking these appointments off, off the table.
Actually, so if I could speak there, is that okay? So the reason I'm abstaining, I want to be clear to people, is just because I have not had an opportunity to speak with the candidates. I have had an opportunity to speak with Mike Martino. So I feel like I can, you know, make a vote on that. And part of my comfort level, these are really super important positions for the village, and I need to be able to have time to speak with the candidates, and I have, I have not had that. That's not part of our process, something I feel I need to do.
Now that you can hear me, can I just say so moved for the first, the first time we made a motion?
Okay.
Well.
Not that it makes a difference right now, but.
Mr. Mayor, why don't, you can take those motions off the table and move it till next month, and I, if, trustee Howell.
You know what, you know what's so frustrating is that I'm trying, we've been trying to fill these positions for almost, it's years, and here we have that opportunity and we can't do it, so, yeah, I'm gonna take it off the table.
And we also, we discussed it at the work session.
We discussed it at the work session, but we did not, I did not speak with the individual candidates, so I did not say anything at the work session.
Their evaluations and their resumes were sent to us.
That's true, but similar to any person I interview for anything, I mean, I don't make a judgment based on paper. Again, these positions are too important to me, I spoke to Greg about it in advance. I was able to reach Mike Martino, as I said, so I feel I can make a decision on that, but the other ones, I cannot at this point.
Okay, well now I'm gonna make a motion to appoint Mike Martino Jr. to the zoning board of appeals, ad hoc position for a term to expire April 1, 2021. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luisey.
In favor. No, we got, one out of three isn't bad, I guess. So this will bring us to our presentations for the evening, and tonight we have Sustainable Westchester, who we had had a community meeting of sometime last year. We were, we had engaged the residents in sustainable energy sources that they could, that they would be able to participate in through the village. And then COVID came along, and then that program sort of got put by the wayside. So we're going to start that up again, and I believe we have a representative from Sustainable Westchester with us to give us a presentation tonight.
Yep, thank you. Hi, I'm Jasmine Graham.
Hey, how are you? Good to see you again.
So great to see you, even though it's virtual, it's still great to see familiar faces.
Likewise.
All right, so I've got host permissions, I'm gonna share my screen. Okay, great. All right. All right, so as the mayor introduced, we'll be talking about the Westchester Power Program today. We'll give you an update of where we've been, where we're going, and kind of what your options are today. Okay, so. There we go. All right, so just a quick overview, I'm here from Sustainable Westchester. We're a local nonprofit based in Mount Kisco. Forty-four out of forty-five of the municipalities in Westchester, including the county itself, are members. And we've got several programs that we run to help municipalities engage in sustainability in economically efficient ways. In the community energy sector, we've got Westchester Power and Community Solar, which I'll talk about today. On the electrification side, we have Heat Smart, our clean transportation project. And for our zero waste program, Tuckahoe is actually a part of, and partners with us on zero waste and the recollect program. But as I said today, I'm here to talk about Westchester Power, so we've got 27 municipalities in the program, 25 of which are on the green supply, so that number has actually increased as Greenberg has gone green. And when we started the program in 2016, there was only 20 municipalities in. All of those 20 municipalities have renewed, we've added an additional seven municipalities, and now we're going into our fifth year. So a little overview for those who may have missed our previous presentations. Essentially, Community Choice Aggregation, which is the type of program that Westchester Power is, is, ooh, those are out of order, is a program that helps us to procure electricity on behalf of residents and small businesses on the municipal level. So we're actually able to get a better rate by essentially pitting suppliers against each other to help us get greener energy. When you sign up with an individual ESCO, it can be a difficult process, there's a lot to choose from. There's a lot of solicitations and not-so-great deals out there, so we remove that confusion for you. Any of the distribution, the maintenance, and the billing all stays with Con Edison, and it's an opt-out program, meaning once the municipality decides to join, the default for the residents and small businesses will switch from Con Edison to the Westchester Power Program. But people have the ability to leave at any time or change their supply option with no fee. So what are the benefits? We've talked about them before. Essentially, this is a vetted community program that provides cost control and stability while mitigating climate change, and importantly, engaging in advocacy and education for our consumers. The big reason why we're here, the reason why this program is so important is because of the environmental progress. So far, we've offset over 660,000 metric tons of CO2. That's equivalent to taking 142,000 cars off the road for a year, or planting 10.9 million tree seedlings and growing them for 10 years. And so the green supply in this program is actually really impactful. So joining Westchester Power and choosing the green supply is actually the greatest impact that municipalities can take to reduce their greenhouse gas emissions. And as we know, New York State has a really aggressive climate plan. The CLCPA, Climate Leadership Community Protection Act. And that is calling for 70% renewable electricity by 2030. What you can see here is that in the upper part of New York, actually 87% of the electricity is generated with renewable supply. But downstate, where we don't have a lot of space, it's actually 70% non-renewable and only 27% renewable. So we know that we need to make that switch. And so not only is joining the CCA and being in the green supply the most impactful action that a municipality can take, but it also positions you for Clean Energy Community Certification, which is a nice sort of program, and the grants that come along with that. So there's actually a new round of grants that's gonna be announced soon. And if you're in the CCA and in the green supply, that will actually be prioritized, and it's a high-impact action item that could position the municipality to get grants. And then, of course, as always, Sustainable Westchester is happy to help with that process. And so we really have a plan in place. What we've talked about before is that this program uses renewable energy certificates, meaning all of the electricity or all of the usage by everyone in the green supply, which is over 90,000 customers, is matched by New York State Hydropower, which is really great, but one of the things that we're doing is we're already integrating Community Solar, which allows an individual to sign up for a solar project in the same utility zone, but they don't have to put solar on their roof, you don't have to worry about any kind of investment, and you get up to a 10% discount on your entire electricity bill. And so this is a really great program that you can sign up for now, but we actually, beginning next year, it's gonna be available on an opt-out basis, just like the CCA. And then our eventual goal is to get direct supply, to build new generation and wheel it directly down to Westchester. So with all that being said, where do we go from here in terms of the CCA? Well, we've done a lot of outreach in Tuckahoe. You all were involved in the initial conversations back in 2015, and so you already approved the local law. So you can check that off nice and easy. And then, as Mayor was saying, we did a lot of outreach at the end of 2019 and into 2020 before COVID hit. So actually, March 2020, we went to the senior center, that was our last outreach event. But we always continue our digital outreach. So in the meantime, you can check us out on social media. We have a YouTube channel, Sustainable Westchester Media, which has a program overview, all the info that you need to know about how to read your Con Ed bill or the importance of green energy. And then we also hold virtual community education sessions on Zoom, and we have one specifically for Tuckahoe next Monday at 6:00 PM, and this is the Zoom link. But we'll also provide that information to you and to the Sustainability Committee, so that you all can push out that information. But for anyone who wants a really in-depth look at CCA, feel free to attend that Zoom session. I'll be hosting it, so you'll get to see me again. And, yeah, so what are the steps to join? Well, Tuckahoe is on a really advanced timeline, so you've already completed the enabling law. You've done your two months of outreach, but after next week's outreach, we'll actually be ready to submit the authorization package to the Public Service Commission. So that doesn't require participation, it doesn't mean that you're gonna join the CCA, but if you did want to join, then you have to get approval. So we can send that in, and we'd get that back most likely in, you know, mid-December. And then you're in a unique position where you can sign on to the existing contract and already know what the rates are. So there's a little bit of technicality in that, in terms of, we have to go to the supplier and make sure that they are able to guarantee that Tuckahoe can join, of course, you know, they don't have an obligation to bring new towns in, but we haven't had any trouble thus far, Tuckahoe's a relatively small community. And so for the Con Ed municipalities that just renewed, they have opt-out letters going out in November, right now, actually, in the next few days, and residents will be enrolled in January. So if you were to sign on to the existing contract, you would just be a few months behind the rest of the municipalities. And so your opt-out letters could be sent in January or February, with residents being enrolled in February or March. All right. Okay, and so, like I said, you are in the unique position where you already know the results of the bidding process. So we just went out for bid in September and October, and these are the new rates. So we chose an 18-month contract from January 2021 to June 2022. And these are the new rates on the side. So we used a really exciting software. Transparent Energy has this reverse bidding software that's been used in the commercial sector for about a decade or so, but it's new and cutting-edge for CCA. So what you'll see here is actually the suppliers bidding against each other and driving the price downward. And so you really have a lot of competition and you know that you're getting the best rate. So the new green rates are 7.405 cents for a green residential account, and for a green commercial account, it's 7.1 cents per kilowatt hour. And so that's a significant reduction, because our current rates are 7.71 cents for the standard and 7.96 for the renewable. So under this new contract, you're actually gonna be paying even less for green energy than the current standard supply customers are paying. And then when you compare that to the Con Ed rates over time, you'll see, we have a fixed rate in the program, but the Con Ed rate is variable, so every month, depending on your meter read date, you get your bill and you find out how much you're gonna pay. Over the past year and a half, we did see the Con Ed rate drop really significantly, in large part because of natural gas prices, because of reduced demand for COVID. So although, you know, we have a fixed rate, and over the life of the program, we've seen savings, we can't guarantee savings because our rate is variable. But when you're looking at an apples-to-apples comparison of our green rate and the other green supply options offered by other ESCOs, you'll find that buying green energy as a group still does save you money. So this is actually, as of today, if you go on the Department of Public Service Power to Choose website, if you're looking for 100% renewable energy at a fixed rate for at least 12 months with no cancellation fee, the lowest rate that you can get is 7.6. And as I just mentioned, in our new contract, our green rate is gonna be 7.405. So you can't get green energy with the, you know, a comparable green energy product that is, that is less than the Westchester Power Program right now. Some ESCOs may have cancellation fees, or they may offer you a shorter term, but for a comparable product, we do come out with a better price. And as I mentioned before, Community Solar is a really great opportunity to add additional savings onto your bill. You can actually be in the Westchester Power Program, get a fixed rate for New York State electricity on the supply side, and you can also join a Community Solar project and get a 10% discount on the entirety of your electricity bill. And beginning next year, it's gonna be integrated with the Westchester Power Program, and so it'll be available on an opt-out basis, primarily first for low-income residents. So one of the most frequent, frequently asked questions that we get is, "So if we were to join, what changes and what remains the same for a resident or a small business?" And really, the only thing that changes is your electricity supplier. You'll now have a fixed rate as compared to the variable rate with Con Edison, and you'll have a renewable energy product. But your delivery and your billing stay exactly the same. You'll still get a bill from Con Ed, if you have any kind of power outage, you still contact Con Ed, none of that changes. And so just to circle back on the steps, essentially, you know, we've done the outreach, we passed the enabling law. We're really at a position where we can send off the authorization package to the Public Service Commission, and then once you're approved, you can decide if you'd like to sign on to the existing contract. And of course, we can go back through all those numbers. Or alternatively, you could wait for the City of Yonkers, which is also on its way to participating. And you could go out with the RFP with Yonkers, but that would put you on a later timeline with probably enrollments beginning in the summer as opposed to February or March. And because we know that we've seen a significant decrease in the price, you know, it might be a great idea for you all to just join on to the existing Con Ed contract as long as the supplier is okay with taking on the extra load, which, again, we don't foresee being a problem, because they've, they've done this before several times. So I'll leave it there, I know it was a lot, but I also know that you've heard me speak many times before. So I'm happy now to answer any questions or comments that you may have.
Jasmine, is this just for electricity or is natural gas also available?
Yeah, it's only for electricity.
Okay.
Looked into natural gas, or, you know, just heating and cooling solutions, but we do have a separate Heat Smart program to help people get geothermal, energize, you know, energy efficiency stuff. So right now, it's just the electricity.
Good, thank you.
Jasmine, it looks like we would finish the onboarding process in March, so does that mean it starts in April or becomes effective in April?
It actually would be, you know, the timeline right now could be people being enrolled in March. So let's say we get the PSC approval back in December. PSC says, "Yep, you're good to go." The next step is actually, you can just go straight into signing the contract. So if we call up Constellation, the current supplier, and say, "Hey, you know, here's the size of Tuckahoe, there's some data stuff that we have to do on the backend." But you, you know, once we get that approval, you sign the contract, really, we could get notification letters out to your residents in probably mid-January or at least February, and have February be that 30, that 30-day opt-out period, and then people could probably be enrolled as early as March.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Anybody else have any questions for Jasmine? Okay, well, again, I thank you, Jasmine, and look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you so much, and again, next Monday, 6:00 PM. If anyone would like to attend our Zoom info session, my email's jasmine@sustainablewestchester.org. If you have individual questions, or you can call our office, 914-242-4725, and I am extension 106.
Thank you.
All right, thanks so much for having me.
Great, I had a question, how does, what does the village do now? Are you gonna have public hearings, or what's the next step?
Um, well, you know, the, you know, there was a public hearing back when the local law was passed. The only real step that the village would need to take, and which you could actually take at your December board meeting, is authorizing somebody to sign the contract, you know, pending the approval. So you can actually authorize someone to sign at your next meeting, and that way, when we get the approval, you can decide whether or not you wanna physically put pen to paper. Well, actually, we're doing electronic signatures, so put mouse to, to screen. But really, authorizing someone to sign is really the last step here. And then we'll take care of outreach ahead of the notification letters going out. We've been in contact, of course, with the Sustainability Committee, and so I know that there'll be plenty of outreach and information to go out to residents.
Good, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, well then, I'm gonna move on to our public hearings, which is a continuation of a public hearing to consider a proposed local law remanding Chapter 10 of the Village Code for Garbage, Trash, and Refuge. Modifications include the elimination of rear yard sanitation collection and elimination of the fall curb loose leaf pickup. As this public hearing is still open, I will be welcoming any comments from the public, presuming that you have not already offered these comments to the board either, you know, by appearing in a Zoom meeting or electronically with an email. So if no one has offered any comments to the board, now is the time, please.
Greg, um, my understanding was this was not going to happen, even though there were postcards sent out, that it wasn't going to happen this season, is that correct? In terms of the leaf pickup?
No, it was supposed to happen this season.
Yeah, and that's what Frank still wanted to do.
This was something that the board had begun discussion back in January of this year, during the, during the budgets process.
Yeah. Um, I had just mentioned to Frank that Tuckahoe is full of a lot of unique properties, and it's not, like, many people don't have enough grass on their property to mulch all their leaves. And I think it's gonna be challenging for, well, I think it's gonna be challenging for a lot of people to try. I mean, I appreciate the ecological purpose of this. But it, I think it is gonna be challenging for people to be able to get rid of their leaves. I realize you can bag them too. So I just thought that Frank had said that maybe it wouldn't happen this year, that they might go ahead and pick up the leaves this year, and then, you know, try and get people to find other solutions to getting rid of their leaves. But your understanding is that he's gonna do it this year? He's gonna stop?
No, it's not happening this year, it is not going to happen this year. Loose leaf collection will continue with the two vacuum trucks, as it has been for so many years.
Oh, I see, okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
That's okay.
Greg, I have a question. This loose leaf program, right, that we're trying to sort of get rid of or have this hearing for, is it being done for, for, for saving money? Does it help us with costs, and it's a homage?
It, it, it's, it's more about efficiency, Harvey, to free up six employees that are walking behind a truck that they could be put to better use on more beneficial projects in the village.
Got it.
So, and of course, you know, you take into consideration the environmental factors and the, the maintenance of, of maintaining these two vacuum cleaner trucks. You know, it's just one of those, you know, we looked at it and we thought that this would be beneficial to the village to do it this way.
Right, and that's the reason I'm asking, right? Coming from the environmental committee point of view, it makes sense, but I also wanted to see what are the other ramifications if we go ahead with this project and try to sort of promote it on our website.
Right.
So we will get rid of those two trucks too, if this goes ahead?
I'm sorry?
Will we get, will we get rid of those two trucks?
Yes, yes, we'll get rid of the two vacuum cleaners, yes.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? Um, I just want to reiterate, I care.
I agree, hold on, could everybody, please, I forgot to mention this. Please identify yourself and your home address, please.
Caracrona, 88.
But I know you're, I know you.
88 Maple. Um, I, I actually just wanted to ask a question, to echo what Barbara was saying. There are a lot of properties in, in the village that don't have lawns. I am one of them, I don't have a single blade of grass on my property, and I am kind of at the top of a mountain. And I am kind of at the top of a mountain. And so when I, I could bag, as Barbara said, and that's fine, if I have to bag, my question is about, is it, is it then saving money and is it as efficient? And if everybody's bagging their leaves and putting them outside, like, do we not have to pay for the disposal of those leaves at that point?
That, that is a consideration, that was a consideration, yes. And, and the dumping fees of, of, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah. Disposing of those, of those leaves and so on, yes. But primarily, it's to allow six DPW workers to do projects and work on things in the village that would be more beneficial. That was reason number one, first and foremost. And again, it wasn't like, you know, any one particular person came up with this one idea. It's, this was a collaborative effort by, by the board in conjunction with, with Frank DiMarco. So do I, do, does anyone else like to comment on this?
Mary O'Donnell, One Scarsdale Road, I have a question. What kinds of other projects would the DPW workers be doing in lieu of leaf pickup during the fall station?
Okay, we have curbing work to be done for one. I, I guess Frank would be better able to answer this than I would. But curbing the, the drains, the sewers that need to be repaired, there are a multitude of projects. I mean, just look at our parks and, and look at the work that's involved in maintaining those parks right now.
Well, yeah, it would be really, I think, important and interesting to know what the trade-off is because it certainly is, it's a reduction of services for the, for the residents. If they don't get their leaves picked up, show, it'd be interesting for the residents to know, well, okay, I'm gonna be okay with that because the, the village will be doing this other, these other projects that we as residents think are more important than having our leaves picked up. So that's why I asked the question.
No, it's, 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 I appreciate the question, Mary, I do, thank you.
Speak of the devil, there he is.
I mean, there's a laundry list of projects that, that we would like to have done here in the village. And when you have the talent that we have on, on our DPW, again, it's my opinion that these, these fellows could be put to a much better use here in the village than walking around picking up leaves.
I guess also, what I'm thinking is we've always had to clean the drains, we've always had to do curb work. The village has always had these other, has similar projects like that that have been going on for all these years. And also picking up the leaves. So it's a little bit hard to understand why these projects now are being put forward and reducing services and leaf pickups.
Mary, I guess the answer to that is there's projects that you could put on the blackboard and then they will sit there for years before the workforce can actually get to do some of those projects because of the leaf pickup, for one. You know, so it's all part of, of their workday.
And I guess the other thought would be, like, what are the priorities?
Well, you see, as you're just saying now, so let's say we needed some curbing to be done. And I'm just, this is just a random, you know, project that I'm throwing out there. So just think, for X amount of weeks, you can't get to those projects. You can't get to that curbing. And then the winter comes along and maybe you can't lay the concrete or whatever happens. So again, so that's why these things get, keep getting pushed off and it, and it seems, you know, that, that things still continue the way they are. But as I said, it's just, again, a matter of efficiency.
And, and also, it's a matter of priorities. You know, what is the priority for the board, for, for the residents? Is the priority to continue a longstanding service of leaf pickup? Or, or is the priority to do, you know, some of the other projects, which obviously are, are, are needed? So that's what it comes down to, priorities. And I think, I, I think that's a very important consideration. What are, what will be your priority? What will the leaf pickup continue to be a priority service for the villagers or not? That's my take on it.
Thank you again. Anyone else like to comment? Okay, well, not being on, I'm going to make a motion to close this public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second. Trustee Howell.
In favor, sorry, I couldn't hear.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor.
Omira is also here.
Oh, she's here now?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I don't have her up on my screen. Trustee Andino. Trustee Andino.
He's on mute.
You're muted, Omira.
In favor.
Thank you.
Okay, we're good, move on. Thank you. This will bring us to the adoption of the October 7th, 2020 meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second, please?
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. And this, at this time, it's the first opportunity for any member to address the board on any agenda item. Nobody wants to address the board on any agenda items? Okay, then I'm gonna move on to our resolutions. Our first resolution of the evening is authorizing a letter of support for Senate Bill 8629, Assembly Bill 7161, as it relates to the seizure and redemption of vehicles used in illegal races, exhibitions, or contest of speed. If I may, I'd just like to, you know, comment on this. The board was approached by a gentleman by the name of James Nolan. He's a Yonkers resident. You may have recalled, his brother was killed in a shooting several years back at the Burger King on Central Avenue, and it was all as a result of mistaken identity over some drag racing that, that occurred on Central Avenue. So what Mr. Nolan has done to honor his brother's life, who was signed to a, the minor league baseball team, the Oakland Athletics, had a very promising career. He's undertaken this legislation to confiscate these, these drag racing vehicles and sell them, and then that money goes back into the municipality. So what we're doing here is Senator Shelley Mayer, in conjunction, I believe, with Senator Biagi, has co-sponsored a bill up in Albany to make this a statewide law. So what we're doing here is we are showing our support to the senators and so that this will hopefully speed along the process of getting this legislation passed up in Albany. So with that, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. Resolution number two is re-authorizing the village administrator consult, in consultation with the village board to take any necessary steps to relax zoning provisions to assist local merchants, restaurants, or gyms aid in their expedited recovery due to the pandemic with respect to outdoor seating and other temporary rules through December 31, 2020. Do I have a motion?
So moved. So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. Resolution number three is authorizing an intermunicipal agreement with Westchester County for a residential food scrap transportation and disposal program. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. Resolution number four is authorizing a shared service intermunicipal agreement with thirteen Westchester communities to jointly procure a municipal recycling app. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. Resolution number five is authorizing an intermunicipal agreement with Westchester County for a mutual aid and rapid response plan. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. Resolution number six is authorizing an intermunicipal agreement with Westchester County for the removal of snow and ice on county roads for the period of October 20th, 2020, through September 30th, 2025. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
Even though the mayor says there's not gonna be any snow, I'm in favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
Five years of no snow, you can't beat it, I'm in favor. And if I'm right, I will, I will continually remind everyone.
As you should.
As I should, you're right. Resolution number seven is authorizing an early renewal incentive for the renewal of commuter parking permits. David, would you like to give a comment on this before we make, we go ahead with this?
Sure. What this is, is that our commuter parking permits are, have been traditionally an annual renewal. So they would start on January 1 and go to December 31. Considering what's going on with COVID and a lot of the commuters are, are asking for rebates and refunds and all this kind of stuff, what we've done is we've actually moved the renewal to a March 1 renewal. So people can renew in January or February. But if the renewals go out now, we're giving a small discount for about one month on their renewal. For a couple of reasons, one, it kind of shows good faith. Two, we get a better understanding of who's actually going to renew. One of our biggest worries, as you know, is how many people are gonna renew our, our parking permits going forward? So we think having that couple of months of a better sense of how many people are gonna renew is gonna be very valuable. That way, we can kind of plan, plan moving forward. So this is a, about a one month, a discount. It's $125 off the $1,700 locks or $75 off the other locks.
Great, thank you.
Then we got our first renewal in today, so that's, that's great.
Wow, that's, wow, that's, that's good.
We need a lot more, though.
Well, we start small. So do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. Resolution number eight is authorizing a license agreement with the Metropolitan Transportation Authority for the placement of various telecommunications equipment, including an antenna, at Village Hall in accordance with comments by the village attorney and village administrator. Gary, I'll turn it over to you first.
This is the one, I think, I think the, we read the contract. I think the chief was gonna speak on this one. Chief, is that right?
Sure. So as the board may remember, a few months back, we entered into an intermunicipal agreement with Metropolitan Transportation Authority Police to piggyback onto their digital radio, radio system. They had invested nearly $30 million in infrastructure to upgrade a radio system throughout their railroad jurisdiction, which includes Connecticut, Long Island, and upstate New York. So with their investment into the infrastructure, we will be able to purchase digital radio equipment and piggyback onto their system. When they did some radio tests in the village and along the lower Westchester area several months ago, they found that putting an antenna on top of our roof at Village Hall would be very beneficial, not only to their system, but, you know, the village of Tuckahoe would benefit greatly by having great frequency and, and availability of, of the radio. So they sent their engineers to inspect our roof, inspect our infrastructure, and found that it was a suitable location for an antenna. So this is a great opportunity for the village to put a new antenna on a roof. There's a $250,000 fee that MTA will pay the village for that service. They will pay all of the improvements to the radio system that they need to, you know, go along with the antenna, some improvements in our basement, some air conditioning, some electrical work, and including removing the old analog antenna that must come down and whatever was the village, nearly $20,000. So it's a, we think it's a, it's a great opportunity for the village. They've a tremendous amount of money, great partnership with MTA, saving us literally hundreds of thousands of dollars if we were to invest in our own infrastructure.
And Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, I remember when we were having these discussions that you had indicated to the board that there are certain areas in the village where your offices lose communication because of the analog radios?
Yeah, so in 2013, they went to a narrow band. The federal government mandated that all radio systems would have to go to narrow band. Since 2013, we've been experiencing some dead spots within the village that clearly are, you know, an officer safety issue as well as putting the public at risk and we can't communicate with our headquarters. So going to this new system takes care of all those problems.
Great, good.
And Chief, there is an investment that we have to put into that, correct? Could you speak to that?
Yeah, so, so that's aside from this antenna, but it does, does require us to purchase new digital radios. And again, that cost was about $300,000, I think $312,000 to be exact. However, going back to what it would have cost even staying with our analog system to put a new analog repeater system in place in the area. repeater system in place in areas like Concordia College and Lawrence Hospital would have required in excess of that $312,000 plus monthly licensing fees of about $10,000 per site. So again, it's a lot of money to put upfront, but it's literally saving the village hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other members of the board? Okay. So do I have a motion for resolution number eight, please?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luisey.
In favor. Resolution number nine is authorizing a cooperative purchasing network contract per New York State Municipal War 103-16 with Gordian for the replacement of bathrooms at the Tocco Community Center and Tocco Library. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
We all want to say it first.
Yeah.
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luisey.
In favor. And hopefully those new hand dryers, you'll be able to dry your hands quicker than you would if you stood outside waving. Have to make a joke. Resolution number 10 is authorizing a cooperative purchasing network contract per New York State Municipal War 103-16 with Gordian for the replacement of the chiller at the Tocco Community Center. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luisey.
In favor. Resolution number 11 is authorizing the referral of proposed amendments to the zoning code as outlined in the Marble Dale Road Design Guidelines to the Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals for report and recommendation. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luisey.
In favor. Resolution number 12 is authorizing the referral of the Westchester County Model Ordinance Provisions as it relates to fair and affirmatively furthering fair housing to the Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals for report and recommendation. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luisey.
In favor. Resolution number 13 is authorizing the acceptance of a donation in the approximate value of $10,000 from the Tocco Beautification Association for native planting and site work at the Tocco Library. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luisey.
In favor. Resolution number 14 is authorizing the declaration of various municipal pieces of furniture and equipment as surplus for sale. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Howell. Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luisey.
In favor. And resolution number 15 is authorizing the transfer of $6,338.39 from Capital Project 2018-0112 Parking Lot Renovations to Capital Project Oak Avenue Parking Lot and the closing of the following capital projects, which would be the Oak Avenue Parking Lot under the project number 2014-0067 as well as the road resurfacing project, which is number 2020-0122. Seems like I said a lot there for. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luisey.
In favor. And the last resolution of the evening is number 16, which is authorizing the approval of vouchers in the amount of $407,504.40. Do I have a motion?
In favor. Bill's still coming in, huh?
Yeah.
So moved. Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luisey.
In favor. And at this point, do we have any items for discussion? Anyone on the board? Nope. Okay, this will bring us to our departmental reports to the board, and we will begin with Chief John Costanzo.
Good evening again. Just a quick announcement. As was in the newspaper and on our website and Facebook and our social media, the New York State law has changed that all passengers in motor vehicle rear seat passengers as well have to be seat belted. So that is now in effect. So I just want to remind the public of that. And coming up in the next week or so, beginning November 16, November 29 is the New York State Click It or Ticket Campaign, which means police officers throughout the state will be out there enforcing the occupant restraint laws. So just keep that in mind. Not only on those dates, but always to wear your seatbelt and including rear seat passengers going forward. And that's really I have. We have Thanksgiving coming up, so wishing everyone a wonderful holiday, even in this COVID atmosphere. I think we can make the best of it. So I wish everyone a safe and healthy holiday season.
Hi, Chief. Can I ask you to just speak about the speeding analysis you did on Warren Avenue? Where a couple of the residents were concerned about some speeders and you got some good information you sent?
Sure. So just unless I put it in the wrong spot, it was Wallace.
I mean Wallace. What did I say?
Yeah.
I said Warren. Sorry.
Yeah. But we did put a speed monitor up on Wallace at the request of some residents that were concerned. The speeds were relatively low, which is a good thing. We had the monitor up for nearly a month. And I think the average speed was about 15 miles per hour with 85 percentile being, I don't have it in front of me, I apologize. It was about 18 or less, which means that 85% of all the cars are going less than that speed. So the good news is that we did not identify any kind of speeding problem. There were some anomalies where one or two cars are going over 40 miles an hour. Whether or not that was an emergency vehicle, we were not able to identify that. But we will continue to monitor and keep an eye on it.
Thank you.
Okay, that'll bring us to our Superintendent of Public Works, Mr. Frank DeMarco.
I don't believe Frank is on. He was attending actually a training session that he had tonight, so he couldn't make it.
Okay. All right. And John, I know John Galuzzi's on vacation. So Camille, do you have anything for us?
Yes, I wanted to remind residents that the resident stickers expire November 30. And also I wanted to let the residents know that the second half taxes will be in the mail. A wonderful news before Thanksgiving. And we strongly urge that you mail your taxes back and please try not to come in person. But if you do not trust the mail, we will have a Dropbox at Village Hall. And happy, healthy, and safe Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Camille. Mr. Gertzen, do you have anything for us, Seaton?
Nothing on my end, Mr. Mayor. Just happy Thanksgiving to everyone and that's it for me.
Thank you, Gary. Okay, David, Mr. Burke?
Sure. Just to further, on the parking permits, Jackie is doing a lot of those via email. So if you have all your information, you can scan it to her, send it to her, and she can put that out in the mail if you don't want to come into Village Hall. Real quick, the farmer's market, the main vendor of the farmer's market is not going to be there for the rest of the year. However, we're looking to verify if the other two vendors will be there for next week. So once we know that for sure, we're going to have that on the website. And a piece of good news, FEMA declared Westchester County a disaster zone for Hurricane Isias. I know it doesn't sound good, but in regards to reimbursement is could be a significant amount of money for the village. So we'll be working on that in the next couple of months. That's all I have right now.
Great. Thank you, David. Some miscellaneous business, the first public meeting of the Police Reform and Reinvention Collaborative will be taking place November 12 at 7:00 PM. The venue has been changed to Village Hall. Is that correct?
Mayor, that is correct. We'll get information in regards to all that on the website tomorrow morning. But we are going to change it to Village Hall. It's going to be a lot easier. And what we're going to actually do is we're going to have it. People can come in person. They've already signed up and via Zoom as well. So it's going to be a lot easier to have anyone that wants to participate be able to.
Okay. And we're obviously going to there'll be a limit as to how many people can actually come into the room. Face mask.
Yeah, obviously, certain people are going to be in the room. But we're actually going to have a little bit of an overflow area in the hallway with a monitor set up as well. So if people want to actually be in Village Hall, they can watch monitor and they can make statements when they do have when we do have an opportunity, they can actually make statements. So.
Okay. So again, this was, this meeting was originally scheduled for the Tocco Community Center. It will be held this Thursday, November 12, 7:00 PM at Village Hall.
Yes.
And our next village board meeting will be December 7 at 7:00 PM via Zoom. The governor has extended that order until he reinforced it November 3, as he usually does at the midnight hour. So it's been extended out for another month. And with that, it'll be, it's time for our Board of Trustees' reports. And we're going to begin with trustee Andino.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mayor, and sorry for my tardiness. Had a bit of an emergency before I got to the meeting. So just to update everyone on the Tocco Library online programs. To reiterate, there is a 30-minute browsing by appointment still Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays from 3:00 to 5:00, and on Wednesdays from 11:00 to 12:00 for seniors. And to just remind everyone to wear their masks. There's also 30-minute computer sessions by appointment on Tuesdays from 2:00 to 4:00, and everyone is asked to wear masks and gloves if they want to use the computers. There's, they're continuing the window pickup by appointment on Mondays, 12:00 to 7:00, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, and Friday, 11:00 to 5:00. And you can place a hold and make a pickup reservation online or call the library for assistance. The number, just in case you don't have it handy, is 914-961-2121. Also, if you didn't know, November is Native American Heritage Month, and the library is having a Native American Customs and Dance event on Monday, November 16 at 5:00 PM. And they're celebrating Native American Heritage with, through a virtual program with Cliff Mathias, the cultural director of the Red Hawk Native American Arts Council. And they'll be sharing some history, culture, and traditions of indigenous people. So the children's recurring programs are continuing storytime for ages 2, 0, you know, newborns to 2, Tuesdays at 11:00 AM. Kid's storytime for ages 2 to 5 on Fridays at 11:00. Yoga for kids on Wednesday, November 18 for pre-K ages 2 to 5 at 11:00 AM, and kids ages 6 to 10 at 4:00 PM. And they also have several children's programs. For the adults, they have a couple of special programs. There's a book club reading on Monday, November 23, Caleb's Crossings by Geraldine Brooks. That book reading begins at 6:30. And there's an art class on Wednesday, November 18 at 5 for adults and teens. And on Wednesday, December 2, I will be doing a cooking lesson at, you know, through Zoom, and I'll be sharing my recipe for sweet potato casserole. If you're looking for any sides for the holidays, that's a good one. Just a couple of recurring programs for the adults. There's a memoir writing program on Tuesday, November 10, tomorrow. Virtual meditation on Wednesdays at noon. There's, they're continuing the online gentle chair yoga on Thursdays at 5:30. So they'll, November 12 and 19 are the last two for the month. Just to give you a couple of updates on what's happening at ECAP. The after-school program reopened, and they still have students during the after-school program. They have about 16 students registered. They are working on a book club, I Am Malala, to teach the youth about being socially and civic-minded. They're also working on the security guard training and financial literacy workshops. And for the holidays, they do have, November 18, they will be having a Thanksgiving distribution for the community. So some good things happening there. I also want to thank Jennifer, the Director at the Tocco Senior Citizens, for inviting me and the entire board to celebrate Fay Blazey's 100th virtual birthday, and that was a hoot today. It just, it really just to see how many people were there. I think there were more people there than on this Zoom. There were. There were more people interested in going to Fay's 100th birthday, and I don't blame them, than coming to the meeting. So happy birthday again to Fay, who is really a force to be reckoned with, 100 years old. 100 years young, actually. I also wanted to, I'm surprised the chief didn't mention Safe Wise, safest cities, 100, top 100 safest cities. Come on, John. Like, you got to tell everybody about that.
I didn't know about it, to be honest with you.
We'll send you the link. So we were, Tocco came in 96th on the top list of 100 safest small towns in 2020. And we made the top 100 safest small towns. So that was pretty exciting, and it's kudos to the police department. Let's see, is there anything else? We talked about the Tocco Police Reform and Reinvention Collaborative. Just to encourage everyone, if you want to have your voice heard, if you have questions about what the police department's programs are, the chief will be doing a small presentation to give an overview. So it's a good time if you have questions or you wanted some more information on what the police does. You can join us there. And I think that's it for me, just to wish everybody a happy and healthy Thanksgiving.
Trustee Andino, will ECAP be conducting a food drive for the Thanksgiving holiday?
They're doing, I don't know if they're doing a food drive. We're having a meeting on Tuesday, and I'll know more information.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Trustee Howell?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Everything on planning and zoning continues to be building. There's a lot going on, especially still on Marble Dale. As I think I reported last month, there are three properties in play. One is the pause and play, and the lots adjacent to it, they're looking for a subdivision to split the lots, build out pause and play a bit, and take down that horrible yellow building that was the Roberts Conditioning Building. So I think that will be really nice for Marble Dale. And then at 174 Marble Dale, which is the old Maria Chiante Restaurant, there's a proposal for a three-story office building. And so the boards are in back and forth with. Uh, the, and so the boards are in, uh, back and forth with the design of the building, especially with planning. And somewhat catty-corner from that at 181 Marble Dale where Rocco's, um, auto body is. Behind that, uh, they are looking to put up a building with, um, uh, two-story with a metal roof. Uh, I don't think they've gotten anyone, uh, to go in there yet, but, um, that's what the proposal is. So it was very important for us tonight to pass the Marble Dale guidelines and, um, that, that'll continue to be a really big, uh, development area for the village. Uh, we still have 69 Main, uh, which is the building next to the Village Hall. Uh, being outfitted for more offices, medical offices. Um, and as you all know, that, that's the old Masonic building, so it still has this, um, Masonic temple symbol on it. And that's part of what's being talked about, um, at the, uh, planning meeting as well. As far as other, uh, projects in the village, I can, um, I know because we've gotten some, uh, questions on the smokestack, which is actually in the process of being taken down. Uh, the project was originally scheduled for two weeks. There was a, a bit of a delay due to the high winds last week. Um, so they expect that that will be completed this week. And thanks to Chief Costanza, who was the bearer of the knowledge of all of the, um, details around timing for that project, as the police have had to facilitate traffic in the area as well. And, uh, uh, finally, uh, the Sterling Bank project, I just wanted everyone to know, and David could comment. Um, David has really tried to reach out to the Yonkers, uh, government, uh, with some of the concerns the village has had. And, uh, you know, I encourage people to share their specific concerns directly with David so that he can incorporate that in the discussion with them. David, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
Um, no, we hopefully we're going to have a meeting later this week. They, um, one of the people there was receptive, actually having a Zoom with us. Um, they did send us some more minutes and things like that, but we're just not getting the cooperation we're looking for, unfortunately. But if there are particular issues that the residents have, definitely send them to me. I'm, I'm just kind of putting them all together. And the village has a lot of issues as well, um, that they probably have known or heard about these anyways, so, but definitely send them to me and, uh, I can get them over to them.
Thank you. So just a quick discussion on, uh, you know, the votes on planning and zoning boards. So, um, you know, I think what you're seeing is we have practiced one, you know, one pathway for how people get into these seats. And by law, um, you know, the mayor appoints and the, the board approves. So in its very simplest, strictest interpretation, it can be just that, the mayor appoints and the board approves. And what I think I've learned as I have sat, um, uh, looking at the planning and zoning boards and being a liaison to them is, is I really realize how important these positions are. And for me, uh, you know, I think I would really value a process where, as a team, the entire board, uh, could interview the individuals. Because of the importance of this, uh, I also would be good to exchange, at least with the, uh, heads of those boards, what, what is needed. For, for both the planning and zoning board, you know, people bring a lot of different skills to these boards. So I want to make sure that people understand, I'm not questioning the mayor's authority to appoint, that is by law and, you know, I'm not questioning that. Um, it's really the process I'm questioning and we had, we had actually done this in 2019. So I think there's a bit of a philosophical difference, uh, also in how quickly you need to fill these positions. So I'm, I'm in the camp that would rather wait a bit and make sure that we're, we're getting, uh, the best people we can. I'm also, uh, an optimist because I think what I hear from some of my colleagues is, oh, you never get people, you know, we, people are not running to apply for these positions. So I keep hoping that we can, uh, continue to build excitement around this. And certainly with all that we have in development for, uh, the Marble Dale corridor, I think it is a very exciting time to sit on these boards. So, um, I just wanted to, to, uh, explain that a bit. I just wanted to, to, uh, explain that. I just wanted to say, there's a little bit of feedback here. Um, uh, the other thing I wanted to mention is you'll see, um, two people here, uh, who I invited to the meeting to speak. Uh, one is Fire Commissioner, um, Brian Keating. Uh, just to do a little bit of an exchange of, you know, what is going on at the fire board, uh, the budget was voted on and for him to update us on that. Um, and the other person is, uh, Paul Ranaloni, uh, who both trustee Lang and I, uh, talked to, had an opportunity to talk to this weekend. Uh, he's running for the Fire Commission and we asked him to come and introduce himself at this meeting. So, um, thanks in advance to those two for, for taking the time out to come to the meeting and updating us on, on what's going on at the Fire Commission. And lastly, I just wanted to, uh, thank everyone for voting. At the last meeting, I made an appeal to have people come out and vote uh, in the election. It was so very important and, um, New York and really the entire country, uh, came out to vote. It was a very exciting thing. And for sure, uh, you know, on a personal note, I really thought I would never live to see a woman vice president. Um, and, and I think we're, we're going to get that, so, um, very exciting. We just wanted to acknowledge that. And that's it. So everyone have a great Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Trustee Lee?
Good evening, everybody. I have just a few things to mention. Um, on Halloween, we hosted a very safe trunk-or-treat drive-through event in the Upper Lake parking lot. It pretty much was put together within two weeks and it was a tremendous success. We would like to thank the Tuckahoe Police Department, our DPW, and all the teens and adults who volunteered. Without you, we wouldn't have been able to pull this off. We had gotten so much positive feedback and we're hoping we started a new tra- tradition in our Tuckahoe village. And another happy note, today being Fay Blazey's 100th birthday, we had a beautiful celebration on Zoom. Many elected officials joined in, many friends, old and new, had joined in as well. Fay was delighted to see all our faces. Westchester County also had, um, deemed today, November 9th Fay Day. Her name was lit up on county center, which she was ecstatic about. At 3:30, we met near the Tuckahoe Community Center. We had a police escorted birthday parade. We passed Fay's home while she stood outside waving like a true matriarch of Tuckahoe. Fay, I know you're watching. I just want to, want you to know how much you are appreciated and how much you are loved. You are the heartbeat of Tuckahoe Senior Citizen Center. I hope you had a very happy birthday and I wish you all the health and happiness today and always. Um, I also want to wish our veterans a very happy Veterans Day to all who served and to those who continue to serve. And wish everybody a happy, healthy Thanksgiving. Go ahead.
Okay, my turn. Um, I'm going to start off, um, this Wednesday because it is Veterans Day. I will not be holding my virtual, um, mayor office hours this Wednesday because of Veterans Day, which allows me to segue into, um, what trustee Lee just mentioned, is Wednesday is Veterans Day. I don't think the weather's going to be conducive to, um, an outdoor ceremony at Broadway Oval. Otherwise, I would have encouraged residents to attend the police ceremony. So I believe because of the rain, because of COVID, um, it's going to be held indoors. And of course, it's only going to be a certain amount of people that will be allowed in to the county major post open school still. Um, I would have to also, you know, wish Fay a happy birthday, but, uh, I'd be terribly remiss if I didn't, uh, Jennifer Vetrimal for organizing not only the Zoom meeting that everyone had today with her. And, uh, and also the parade that trustee referred to was held this afternoon. Uh, now, when you think that, uh, as the trustees have mentioned, Assemblywoman E. Colley took time out of her day to attend this Zoom meeting. Senator Shelley Miller took time out of her schedule to attend the meeting. Attorney Exac George Lattimer was also there, so, I mean, it's just a testimony to this woman's, um, personality. Her enthusiasm, it's just so contagious and we're just so lucky to have any of the village's Tuckahoe. So happy 100th birthday. And again, I'd also like to thank the Tuckahoe Police Department for ensuring that the parade around was, uh, safely guided. And, um, at the last meeting, I made a comment about the impunity of a comment that was made on social media. I appointed one member. My comment was not only directed towards the county general, but to all of senior home village elected officials or city members of the boards. The word I used was unethical, which in the true meaning of the word was not in the narrative. The word I should have used is inappropriate and unprofessional, and it's a social media matter. Uh, in closing, I'd like to ask everyone to please continue to wear your appropriate practices of social distancing. Um, as we can all see, the cases are coming to rise out of here in Westchester, by media media trials, you know, and so. You know, they've been talking about a second wave, a second wave. Let's do what we've done to keep New York in this area safe and secure, our nose to the ground still. And lastly, I would also like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Whatever it's showing, it's just a memory.
Hey Greg, you have to repeat all of that. Three people said they couldn't hear you. You just sound like you're underwater.
Am I? Am I? Where do I have to start from? Do I have to take it from the top?
No. We can hear you. It's just, it's just a little muffled.
Sounds, sounds muffled.
I, I got it.
No, we could not, I could not hear a word you said. Sounded like she, you were underwater and I couldn't make out what you were saying, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Captain.
I couldn't understand.
You don't have to start all over again.
Yeah, if I'm, it's going to be the same. Well, what haven't you heard? Does it sound any better now?
No, it's, it's very low.
Oh, it doesn't? So it's okay.
It was fine before. I don't know why.
Yeah, duh, just alright.
Just the fidelity was there. You sounded like you were an old telephone is what happened, like a band-aid. You lost highs, you lost lows, more lows.
Yeah. No problem. I know. I can see that. I'm like, what happened?
Something happened. It's, it's one of two things. Either the microphone crapped out on you or there's a problem with the data stream and the audio quality is diminished. That's what I do for a living. I'm an audio engineer. That's, that's the diagnosis. Probably a band-aid issue.
Well, okay, um, that, this is the second opportunity to address the void you already had.
Can't hear you, no.
I'm pettled. All right, I know that trustee Lee, um, trustee Howe, you may have mentioned, uh, we have two guests in the room, so. Um, Commissioner Fire, Commissioner Brian Tweed, would you like to step up to the mic? This mic is working better than mine.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, much better.
So Mayor, it's actually Brian Keating, not Brian Tweed, who is the former Tweed. It's, it's no problem at all. He's a good guy.
Listen, I can't hear. If you can't hear me, then I can't hear you, so.
Okay. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So, thank you for inviting me. Um, and thank you for the support during the election last year, uh, particularly Renee's unbelievable, uh, support. So I very much appreciate it and thanks for the opportunity to come and talk about it. Um, just in basic, I just wanted to say, um, we're working hard. Uh, we tried to do the best we could for the taxpayers and also the firefighters. We passed a 0% increase budget while doing some things with the lines and, uh, in particular, we moved a few hundred thousand dollars more into the overtime budget. Uh, which, uh, should carry us through all of next year without any hiccups, uh, no closures, no nothing. And, uh, so I just wanted to report that back to you guys for, uh, being so supportive. Um, we're doing a few things where our goals are trying to, uh, I think each of the firehouses needs some, uh, instruction done. We all do. And we're going to work hard at trying to get those things done. Um, we're also trying to be more transparent, particularly with the information. Uh, we're working on, uh, a potentially, uh, better website, something that's more, uh, uh, that interface is better. And, uh, we'll be able to get the agendas out, you know, and much more accessible to the public. And that's it, really. We're just, uh, we're working hard and we're trying to keep, uh, you know, providing the best firefighter, uh, uh, services. While trying to look at, uh, you know, the expenses as well. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Do I still sound like I'm underwater?
Yeah.
It sounds like more of like an echo of it.
You sound a little bit, there, there's been a bit of an, it's a bit better, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, the fidelity has improved somewhat. Hey.
All right, um, I know we have another guest in the room who would like to speak.
Yes, uh, Mayor, my name is Paul Ranalone. And I've been, I've been a resident of Tuckahoe for 59 years. I lived on Stewart Avenue that whole time. My father started 3D cleaners at Wendell Road in Eastchester in 1956. And it operated until December of last year, when the family retired from the business. I became a volunteer firefighter at the age of 18 and after taking the civil service test, I was appointed a career firefighter on March 1st, 1986. On November 30th of 2019, uh, after 46 years of service, I retired at the age of 65. I aged out. Uh, the fire department was never just a job for me. It was a calling. It was a passion. And after almost a year of retirement, I wished to continue my work in the fire department by becoming a member of the Board of Fire Commissioners. I have worked on several committees over the years and I find it easy to, to work with a group of people to achieve a common purpose. I have already been in discussion, in discussion with, uh, a, a couple of the board members on starting an outreach program uh, to attract residents of the village who, or the, and the town who may have thought about firefighting as a career. I hope that all residents of Tuckahoe, as well as Bronxville and Eastchester, will give me the opportunity to continue to service, to serve the, the town and vote for me on Tuesday, December 8th, between 2:00 PM and 9:00 PM. Tuckahoe residents will be voting at the Tuckahoe Community Center. And, uh, Eastchester residents will divide up between the American Legion Post on Bell Road and the Eastchester Library and Tuckahoe, and Bronxville residents will be voting at the Bronxville, uh, Village Hall. And I want to thank Mayor, Mayor Greg Luise and the entire village board, Dan, Gina, Renee and Omira for giving me this opportunity to present myself to the village and the rest of the town. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Does anyone, anyone else would like to address the board?
Yes, I would.
Your name and?
Scooter Scott.
Yes, sir.
Uh, you can hear me, I get it. So, um, in the course of the last village board meeting, trustee Andino made some comments that I feel I have to address. She made reference to a Facebook incident that occurred on the page of trustee Howe. And while I agree with the core of what trustee Andino said, I have my issues with how she went about addressing it and some apparent double standards that she seems to be operating from. Trustee Andino has often cited the need for those in government to hold themselves to a higher standard. And I find that admirable and a worthy pursuit. However, none of us are perfect. However, none of us are perfect and we all trip and fall from time to time. When those things happens, it happened, it is incumbent on those in government to embody that higher standard by recognizing the fallibility of those you serve with and respect their humanity as we seek to correct them. And this is my point of divergence. Trustee Andino could have spoken on this matter in a general fashion without mentioning the parties involved to seek to correct the behavior and give the benefit of the doubt to the offender. Yes, the comment was inappropriate. However, it was not uncommon, or it is not, it's not uncommon to the type of snarky retorts that populate Facebook. Instead, she chose to engage in humiliating the man by saying his name and asking the board to join in that humiliation. Real leadership always respects the dignity of those you lead by looking to serve them, not berate them. I believe this is what you do, Mr. Mayor, in order to have the post removed, and I commend you for doing so. In doing what she did, trustee Andino comes across as more interested in defending a political ally than she is in displaying the higher standard that she says she wants to represent. What you did to this man was wrong. Furthermore, on that same page, trustee Howell has a post in which he basically calls the President of the United States Adolf Hitler. This too is inappropriate, yet I hear no call from trustee Andino for the board to condemn her post. This post shows a complete lack of respect for the office of the president. Trustee Andino keeps saying our children are watching and she has a very good point. We need to demonstrate respect to our children for authority and the offices of government. In posting that comment, trustee Howell has told the children of our village that you don't have to respect the president if you don't like him. To voice your displeasure over the president and his policies is one thing, and I support trustee Howell and anybody's every right to do so. To make a comparison to a man who engaged in mass genocide because you find him offensive is to go too far. It demeans the value of every life lost in World War II, especially the victims of the Holocaust. It also insults the citizens of our village who voted for the president and support him. By not calling attention to this moral failure on the part of a colleague, trustee Andino undermines her personal integrity and the validity of her call to the board to a higher standard. This speaks to my final points and concerns. Trustee Andino seems to have taken upon herself the mantle, the mantle of moral authority for the village board. She has a video on her trustee page in which she says she and her party represent all of its citizens. But her actions are not consistent with that video and with the mantle of moral authority. Furthermore, this is not the time, this is not the first time she has inserted herself into situations where things have been addressed and resolved, like the removing of that post, seeking to extract, extract an additional pound of flesh. She often speaks of how her heart is affected by the words and actions of people as she rushes in to save the day. What about the hearts of those she's judging, putting down and humiliating? Don't they have hearts too? Don't they deserve dignity or to be treated with dignity and respect? All these things speak to an approach that I, that appears to seem to work in people and situations in a way that creates and exacerbates division instead of bringing healing and restoration. We're coming out of a contentious ele, a contentious election with days, if not weeks, before we know the final outcome. People on both sides in this town and in this nation are at their wits' end and bringing our nation together will not be easy. And that starts with each of us in this village. And it starts, and it starts with a foundation of respecting our political, cultural, and personal differences. And then it's built up by goodwill, not demonizing and attacking, asking questions before jumping to conclusions to try to understand the other side before you go in. Most importantly, it requires each of us to interact assuming the best, not the worst of intentions on the part of our fellow Americans, especially in difficult times and situations. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, if I may, if I may just say, and I don't want, this is, what you're referring to was taken from trustee Howell's personal Facebook page.
That is correct. Yeah.
Okay. I'm a firm believer in First Amendment rights, um, and that was on her personal Facebook page.
As was his comment on her page. And that's my point. If, if, it, it wasn't on the.
The problem here is, the problem here is, he is a, he is a, sits on the board.
Right.
That is, and he is appointed by this village board. That is not the forum for him to have this type of discussion with the trust, trustee Howell, or any trustee for that matter. So it was the wrong forum for that type of discussion as I made that comment quite clear.
I agree with you. No, I, I, I'm not saying it wasn't, I agree with you completely on that. What I'm trying to understand is how, all of these things occurred on her personal Facebook page, correct?
That is correct, but it was brought out into pub, into the public's view, which is where I have an issue with it.
Right. And, and what, what I'm, what I have the issue with is trustee Andino then bringing it up in a board meeting in a way that did not respect the dignity of the party involved. This was something that had been resolved, but then she asked the board to, to join in some kind of condemnation. And I think that's going too far. I mean.
May I respond to you?
Of course.
Cause I, cause I appreciate feedback and comments from the, from the uh, village residents. The, the difference between what trustee Howell posted and what Chris Garrity responded on her post is that she was on her personal page expressing her own political views.
Right, and I respect that.
But let me finish.
Okay.
Talk.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
So, he, he attacked her personally. This is, you know, we are sitting on these boards, working together. She's voicing her own political views, whether you agree with them or not, that's her prerogative to the mayor's point. I think as a sitting member on the zoning board, the comments that he made were very offensive comments, were personal attacks. They were not made in just the way some are proclaiming. Those were direct attacks. I don't believe that my statement in saying we have to conduct ourselves in a certain manner were attacking him or berating him or putting anyone down. So, that's the difference for me. If trustee Howell on her, if trustee Howell had made those comments on her village trustee page, I would have said the same thing about her.
Okay.
Did not.
But, but to backtrack, actually, two, two, two points. Um, you didn't just say that, and notice, I agreed with you that it was inappropriate for him to do that. While pointing out, yeah, it's the typical kind of snark that appears on Facebook. I agreed with you. It's not appropriate. My point is, in bringing it up at the board meeting, with, especially since the situation was resolved, it seems as if you were trying to shame him. That is the point I'm trying to make.
So what I, what I wanted to be very clear to the public at large, had already, that had already, that had already seen it. It had already been seen, whether or not it was taken down and whether or not people saw it, people saw it already. So it was out there and it was being discussed. And I want to make sure that someone spoke to the fact that, that we should not continue in that practice for everyone, not just for that one person, but for everyone, that if we are going to see comments on someone's page, the, the way those comments were made, that that is not okay. And those are my feelings.
And I agree with that. My point is, did you feel, why was it necessary for you to single him out? Why couldn't you have spoken about it in a general fashion, saying, we had a situation on Facebook where some inappropriate exchanges went on, and this is not the kind of thing that we should engage in?
And I'll tell you why. That, that, and as you said, that has happened before and I have called it out before because I feel if you don't speak to people directly about their behavior, then it doesn't change and people can hide behind it. But when you bring it out into the public, then it makes the person think twice about doing such things again. That's my personal decision to have made.
Okay, well.
And, and this is Scott, and I can appreciate your point of view.
This is like the third time.
I can appreciate your point of view, but I just won't have like, we're gonna have an hour long conversation outside of this meeting.
Okay. Okay.
I'm open to that. I really am.
Good. I appreciate it.
Just, just to finalize the point, the point was that one person's comments were put on their personal Facebook page, which they have a right to voice their political opinion.
Which I agree with.
The other one was that there was a personal attack made on an appointed official to an elected official.
Okay, it's, so let me, let me see if I understand the point as, as you and the mayor are, are out of line. What went over the line is the fact that because they sit on the board, that kind of interaction is not okay. See, here, here's the thing I'm, I'm trying to understand now. In talking about the fact that our behavior is on display, and I do respect the right of people to say, post and say whatever they want. But I also respect the right of people to draw conclusions and assessments from said behavior and postings, which is where I believe, I thought trustee Andino was coming from. What you're saying is not that the post in and of itself was wrong, but because they sat on, not the wording per se, but because of this, the political situation that is the parenthetic on it? Is that what you're saying?
Because the, the person who wrote the post.
Mm-hmm. Sits on the board, sits on the board.
It's on a, not because Renee sits on a board, but because the gentleman is a, an appointed board member. That's correct.
Okay. We can go over the finer points in a later time, but I, I think I understand the distinction you're making. Okay. Good. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'd like to see, I'd like to speak.
Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
Daryl Taylor, 35, Justin Place, Tuckahoe.
Okay, Mr. Taylor.
Okay, so after just listening to all of that, you know, it's funny that there's a long diatribe about trustee Andino and her opinion that she had on what happened, like she doesn't have the right to bring it up in a board meeting. But you as the mayor did your job and said that it was inappropriate, it shouldn't have happened, and you agreed with her at the time. But there was no long diatribe concerning your opinion of it. So to me, this is more political fodder. You know, it's getting old. You know, we need to move on. Okay, we really do. We mean to, it was wrong what he done and he shouldn't have done it. And she had the right to bring it up in a board meeting. She had the right to bring it up. Now I want to go on and on and on and on and on and on again. You didn't say nothing about the mayor.
No.
He said the same thing that she said.
Wait, wait, wait. Hold on a minute.
Said the same thing that she said. You, that you didn't mention him at all. You came on here and attacking her.
Okay, I, I don't think you understood what I was saying though. What I said was, in the case of the mayor, he did not bring up this man and ask the board to condemn him. That is the distinction. That was what I had my issue with. The mayor then pointed out to me what the distinction was in, between trustee Howell's posting on Facebook and Chris Garrity responding to it.
Okay. Have you spoken to Chris Garrity about what he said?
I have an issue with what the mayor said.
Have you spoken to Chris Garrity about the, about the, about what he said and done?
It's already been dealt with. It's dealt with.
And we're talking about multiple posts here too, so people are getting that all confused, but I just don't think it's worth talking about anymore.
Exactly. It's old news.
Okay, anyone else?
Yep, I'd like to, I, I have a comment. 4829 Silvan, how is everyone? Um, Mayor Luise, you mentioned that uh, the executive order from uh, Governor Cuomo was extended into December. Um, and I'm just wondering, I want to ask you and I want to ask the board, um, if, and maybe this has been discussed before, but are we planning to continue to have these, these Zoom conversations even after life returns to normal? And you know, the reason why I'm asking is, you know, I, I've never seen this many people in the, the village board meetings. Um, I appreciate these conversations, not, not, not so much the political ones, but the ones about everything that's going on in town and um, I, I'm curious what the board thinks about uh, continuing these, these meetings basically um, in perpetuity.
Speaker for myself, I can't wait to get back in the, in Village Hall and have these meetings live and in person.
I feel the same. Maybe there's an opportunity to have both. Um, you know, now that we've done this, we're gonna, we're gonna try it at our first um, police reform committee meeting and have both and maybe, who knows, maybe we could do both moving forward.
I'm, I'm for going back in person as well.
I'm guessing that would be either or, but you know, I'm just uh, wondering the convenience of having all these people being able to join for specific topics is, is something to consider.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a point well taken. Yeah, you're right. The attendance has increased dramatically uh, during the Zoom period. Um, but you know, what's gonna drive, you know, what I think drives in-person meetings is gonna be the science. I mean, uh, you know, where's this, where's this virus going? Do we want to have people coming into Village Hall? How many people do we want to have coming into Village Hall and so on and so forth? As of right now, there is Plexiglas stations set up in Village Hall. Uh, so, you know, with the COVID being what it is right now, only a certain amount of people would be allowed into the meeting per se. So as, I mean, again, as of right now, this is extremely convenient um, for everyone out there in the public. All you gotta do is, you know, pick up your phone and turn on your computer and you can be uh, you know, you can be part of these village board meetings. But, you know, eventually, uh, we all want to get back and, and see everybody in person. There's a whole different dynamic, you know, when you're talking to someone.
Absolutely. It is, it is different. I think it's a, it's a, it's an interesting step towards having more people involved. Um, it's, I think it's great for democracy, right? It helps people get involved and you know, this is another two-hour meeting. People can come and go and eat and go to the bathroom and you know, all good things that maybe people wouldn't go if uh, uh, if it had to be in person. So anyway, I just want to share that. I don't know if anyone else feel this way. I'm very thankful that we're able to have these meetings in Tuckahoe.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone out there, anyone else out there would like to speak?
I'd like to say that you guys run a very nice meeting and thanks again for the invite.
You're welcome. We try our best. Even if some of us sound like we're underwater.
You sound better now. You're good.
I didn't, I didn't do anything. Still here. I'm still in the same spot. Bandwidth thing. It's a bandwidth thing. It's a bandwidth thing. Okay. Band on the run, I guess. All right, so if there is no other further comments for the board, I will make a motion to adjourn this meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Until next time, Tuckahoe. Have a good evening.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving.